Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whom we...
The Springfield Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals attending to make public comments should be aware that they are being videotaped. Speakers will be asked to state their name and address before making their comment.
All right, thank you, and I'd like to announce that prior to this meeting this evening, we did have an exec session regarding a student issue. Mrs. Bicker, can you check the roll call?
Yes, everyone is present.
Wonderful. So, before we begin, I would like to have an announcement, I'd like to make a motion at this time to remove action items A through N from the agenda. So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any board discussion? So all those in favor of removing action item A through N from tonight's agenda, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
You have that, Mrs. Bicker, thank you. All right. Are there any announcements from Mr. Rizzo or the student reps?
We do not have any announcements this evening.
No announcements.
Any other announcements, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I have no announcements this evening.
Then we have public to be heard on agenda items only, and I cannot recall from last week whether we started with in-person or on Zoom. So why don't we go ahead and start with in-person here? So, all right, so is there anyone who would like to speak on agenda items only?
Thank you. Hi, good evening, Mary Jo McNamara of Limerick, Pennsylvania. And so I had the, I'm reading tonight, so I get it all out correctly. So I had the pleasure of attending two of the committee meetings last week. I want to shed some light on some of the commentary that was made and some of the actions that I saw at those meetings. So at the beginning of one of those meetings, I took a seat at the table.
Which agenda item are you referring?
I'm sorry, I think it's agenda item for committee meetings and board and committee reports. So at the beginning of one of those committee meetings, I took a seat at the table where there were other committee members, board members, and invited guests to the meeting were seated. I was very quickly reminded by Dr. Wright that the table was for committee meetings, committee members only. Mr. Jackson intervened and said anybody in the room was invited to sit at the table. Dr. Wright indicated it was okay, it was his meeting. Mrs. Hermans, who was also in attendance as a member of the public, said that she didn't want to violate any policies, so she remained seated away from the table. I spent some time reviewing the policies under the board policies. I can't find anywhere any information related to who's allowed to sit where at a committee meeting. If that exists, I'd really like someone to point it out to me. There's not an ultimate ruler here, right? This isn't a kingdom or a queendom, it doesn't belong to Dr. Wright or any of the board members, right? I was singled out, there were other people there that weren't part of the committee that were at the table. The board should be fostering an environment and an atmosphere of inclusivity and diversity. It is running rampant in our school district. Putting up barriers, having people in a 20 by 20 room being told they're not allowed to sit next to their representatives that they potentially elected is just wrong, right? And it doesn't foster that kind of environment. My unsolicited advice to this board is to figure out the things that are important and make sure that you're aware of them. There are much more important things about whether you want to seat me in the back of a room or whether or not I can sit next to you to give my input. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else within the room who would like to speak at the podium? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom?
At this time, no, there's no one on Zoom.
All right, thank you very much. So that's time, then we will move into our presentations. The first presentation is from Mr. Fink, who is our Chief Financial Officer with the presentation and discussion of the 2022-2023 Proposed Final Budget.
Nice to see everyone. It's that most wonderful time of the year again. It's Christmas. Might as well be, Christmas come early. One second, and here we go. Okay, so tonight, while that's coming up, we're going to take a look at the proposed final budget for the next school year, 2223. But before we do that, we'll take a few minutes to look at where we were, where we are, kind of, because it's not quite the end of this year either, so we can better understand where we're going. So initially, we're going to take a look at the financial results from last year. Those are audited results. We'll take a look at projections for this current school year. As we see with nine months into this year, the fourth quarters, of course, are most active from the financial side. But we'll look at where we think we're going to be at the end of this year, and then from there, we'll, we'll jump into the budget, proposed final budget summary. So looking at the revenues, the middle column is our financial results from last school year. These are audited numbers. So overall, we tallied approximately $173.5 million in revenue. Not surprisingly, about 75% of that is local revenue, which is typical somewhere, usually last summer, within the 75 to 80% area. If we look over to the column to the far right, that is where we think we're going to be at the end of this school year based on trends, based on activities so far, which is about $180 million in revenues. I said this in committee this, this past week, that I'm going to mention earned income taxes and transfer taxes often, because those are two interesting things that have happened this current school year. So EIT or earned income taxes have, are kind of in an anomaly state. They're growing, they've grown this current year at a faster rate than has been expected and has been trended over the past five years. Typically, they grow somewhere around 4 to 4.25%. This year, they're close to 7. So we've seen a pretty big bump there. Transfer taxes are even more of anomaly. We're seeing that line item come in almost double what we budgeted for. The reasons for that, because there were a number of real estate sales at the end of last year that it didn't get booked as transfers until over the summer, you know, as the, as the deeds office kind of caught up. Additionally, we've seen some very large purchases or very large real estate sales, including, which many of you probably know, the Providence Town Center, which sold a month or two ago for about $160 million. That sale alone contributed just a little over $600,000 in transfer tax revenue. Wonderful to have, but also one-time and not sustainable going forward either. We can't count on those every year. Is it going, Rich? Hit the wrong one, that's why. I'm trying to get over to the expenses, there we go. So again, down that middle column, we look at the audited actual from last year. We tallied about $173 million in expenses, which was pretty much right in line with where we thought we were going to be with budget. Again, as is normal, the salaries and benefits constitute about 70% of the total spend, which has been occurring since before I've been here, as I look through those trends. Projecting 21 and 22 for this current school year, we're looking at the salaries and benefits again to be about 70%, and we're looking at the total to be about $178.678.7 million, which again, is right about where we projected that they would be. So if I stack all of that up, what we can see here is the audited financials from last year, we had a small surplus of approximately $418,000. That is within a quarter of a percent of what we budgeted, so pretty accurate budgeting. This year, again, with a whole quarter to go of operations, we're looking at potentially a $1.3 million surplus, which again, is less than 1% of what we budgeted. So again, pretty accurate budgeting. So going forward, where does this get us? So let's take a look at where we think we're going to go from here, now that we've taken a little bit of, of what's just happened or where we were and now and where we are. So first, broken record slide, right? These are all the things that we're up against in doing these predictions. Every year, it's the same thing, we're, we're expected to produce a budget before the budget at the state level is done. State and federal make up about 20% of our overall revenues. So again, kind of difficult. However, through trend, we can get pretty close. We also know that in February, the governor comes out with his proposed budget, which is usually a whopper, and then, of course, it gets scaled back considerably by the time we get to June 30th. So looking at the revenues, I'm jumping ahead on my paperwork here, looking at, looking at our revenues, these are what, this is what we're expecting. So local revenues, again, like I said, usually between that 75 and 80% of total, we're coming in at about 78% of total revenue. Local revenues, of course, are the big chunk. The big chunks within local revenues are typically real estate taxes, obviously. That constitutes about 2/3 of our overall revenues, plus earned income taxes and transfer taxes. Real estate taxes, we're looking at about an organic growth of about 1.8%, which is going to equate to about $1.6, $1.7 billion of revenue, increased revenue there. That's if we do nothing, so that's at current rate, that's just added growth and assessments. Earned income taxes, as I said before, for this year, overperforming. I don't expect the same performance next year. Like I said, typically, they grow about 4.25% year over year. This year, they're growing close to 7%, so we're going to have to watch that closely. In addition, you know, the earned income taxes, economy-driven. The economy is a little bit shaky right now with inflation and such going on. So I'll talk a little bit about, about more, talk a little bit more about that as well. Transfer taxes, again, overperforming, we're about twice where we thought we were going to be at this time. Again, a lot of one-timers, not a lot of things we can plan on for the future, as far as that type of growth is concerned. The trend for the past five years in transfer taxes have been about $2.2 million. We're at about $4.4 million for this year, so we have to watch that number closely. State revenues, about 21% of total, basically nominal changes here. We don't expect anything big to come from the state. You know, the, the basic education fund, special ed funding, transportation, a little bit here, a little bit there, but nothing really big to write home about. The biggest increases are hap, would happen in the Peasars and FICA subsidies, but those, of course, are based on spending. So if you spend more, you get a little bit more. But we'll talk about that once we get to the expense side as well. Federal, I'm expecting a little bit of a decrease in the federal spending. Why? Because we're starting to wind down on a lot of that COVID S or spend. We've spent, we've spent a big portion of that already through last year and then continuing through this year. So we're expecting that those revenues, of course, will start to wane down. And the idea behind those grants is you recognize the revenue as you spend it. So as we decrease the spend, we also decrease the revenue recognition. So local revenues, this is what we're looking at, a real estate tax. I, I had mentioned again about that 1.8% increase. Earned income taxes, we're, we're doing very strong this year. However, not looking to, to think that that is going to follow the normal trend. In addition, as I said, it's economy-driven. I'm one of those nerds that reads all 12 paragraphs of the economic reports that comes out, and I'm starting to see increased concern from economists about potential recession. As, you know, as the Fed starts to fight inflation by raising interest rates, there could be a contraction. I know that, so that, that is, is starting to... by raising interest rates, there could be a contraction. I know that, so that, that is, is starting to, starting to creep up and, and causing, from my perspective, to be a little bit cautious on, on that. So when it happens, when the economy retracts, wages can retract, they can flatten. God forbid, there's layoffs, so those types of things where our, our wage base decreases and therefore the tax earned also decreases, or, or levels off at least. Transfer taxes, I just mentioned that, $2.2 million has been our trend over the past five years. I don't expect that to change unless I see some real strong evidence that that happens over the next couple of years. And then the other, other two items are pretty much flat. On the state revenue side, I also mentioned nominal changes pretty much across the board are expected. The, the only things that have any real meat to them are, are the FICA and the Peasars, and again, that's because of increased spend, which I'm gonna talk about in a couple of slides. And federal, as I mentioned before, too, it may, going down mostly because of the decrease in the COVID S R spending and the recognition of those revenues. So that's, that's pretty much the way. Stack them all up. What we're looking at is about $178 or so million in revenue from, from our sources. Again, like I said before, most of that is due to the dip in the federal spending that we're expecting, and of course, the change in that transfer tax that we know is not gonna, not gonna be sustainable. If I look at the expenditure side of the ledger, wages and benefits typically are about 70% of our total budget. That doesn't change. Salaries and wages, we're expecting approximately $2.7 million increase. A lot of that is contractual, based on our, our collective bargaining agreement with our association and the various agreements we have with the other groups within, within the district. So overall, professional wages contribute about $1.4 million to that. Salaries, which for, for S, Springford Cyber Learning, also, we have that MOU for that. That includes this course building initiatives as well. And then overall admin and support wages, about $540,000. Included in those numbers are those two pieces below for additional wages due to growth and due to growth and need and growth and student need. About 635 for professional, about 113 for support services. Number two, pretty much depends on number one. So it's, it's a lot of calculating going on there. But again, as I said before, as you spend more, you pay more in taxes. So the employer taxes, the payroll taxes, looking at that increase about $110,000. And then the Peasars, there was a small change in the Peasars rate this year, where thankfully, we've gotten away from those five, seven, 10, 15% increases in that rate, like we experienced when I first came here, five, six years ago. So that's kind of leveled off a bit, which is great. But the increase in, in the wages, of course, contributes to an increase in the, in the retirement contributions as well. Medical, I think the district has done a great job at managing those costs through our self-employment, sorry, self-insurance initiatives and keeping those plans in the condition that they are funding those plans as we do. And we're expecting only about a 2% increase in that, in that line. We look at expenditures that are not personnel related. This is what those look like. So outside services for special education, increase of about $400,000 there, which is not bad at all. In the past, we've seen increases much larger than that. I think two years ago was almost a million. So, so that's actually come down quite a bit. Funding for our tuition for our students who go to the Western Center, plus the debt service that goes along with that, our portion of it with the other two districts that, that also contribute about 190. Reworking our substitute agreement, that's about $150,000, so we can be more competitive with substitute rates with our other districts in the, in the, in the county. And tech plan replenishment, general supplies, inflation, transportation, fuel costs. We all kind of know what that is. It takes a lot to run a 72 passenger bus, 70, almost 80 of those every day. And then we are looking at a decrease in equipment costs, which is actually easier to, to look at when I show this next slide. And that's about two thirds of the way down under property and equipment. I'm expecting property and equipment costs to decrease by that $600,000. That was mainly COVID spend for computer equipment. That's why that's coming down. So when we look at everything side by side, again, the 2020, 21, 22 budget, 21, 22 forecast for the rest of this year, and then the budget, we're looking at a nominal increase, actually, a little over 3% is the change to about 183.3 million. Now, when we stack all that up, we do our math, we took our revenues, our expenses, we do have a, there's the, the, that transfer from committed funds for retirement. We do have a fund set up where monies were set aside to help with those increases in the Peasars rate. So we're applying a portion to that, which gives us a net shortfall or gap of about four, four and a half million dollars, call it, which equates to a tax impact, impact at this stage in the process, and I'm gonna emphasize at this stage in the process, of about 3.8%. As a reminder to the board, the index this year is 3.4%. The index plus referendum exceptions for, which mainly for special ed increases, is 3.95%. So we are within that window, just so you know. PDE would accept this. I'm not saying we're done. I'm just saying they would accept this if there was put forward. Next, I just kind of wanna, kind of wanted to do a slide. It was requested just to show what that means. I mean, what does a 1% tax change mean? It, it sounds grand, but who, who knows what that means? It sounds horrible, actually. 1% and, and what does it mean to the district and to a taxpayer? I think that's important to note. So 1% from a revenue standpoint for the district means about $1.1 million. 1% tax change to a taxpayer means about $28.74 per $100,000 assessed. I don't know what everybody's property is, as I know mine is, but I don't know what everybody else's is, but you can, that math is, is pretty easy. So when you're talking about a 3.8% increase, you're talking about $109 per year for $100,000 assessed. And again, the 3.4 is about 97, just under $100 per year. I think it's also important to remind the board about how property taxes work versus how income taxes work, because we never really complain much about the state increasing income taxes, and 3.07% since as long as I can remember. But their costs keep going up too. Why is, why is it they can cover their costs if they're not increasing their interest rates? Because the baseline increases. Someone's in their job, they get an increase, your taxes went up. You move to a new job, get more money, your taxes go up, right? That's how that works. Property taxes work the opposite way, because the baseline stays the same. Assessment in my home within Limerick hasn't changed 17 years that I've lived there, and it probably hasn't changed since it was built in 99. So in order to increase the revenues accordingly, you're not gonna change the base, you have to change the rate. That's how that works. So that's why there's that big difference. Nobody complains. Well, we all complain about paying taxes, of course. Income taxes or otherwise. But we don't really complain about paying our state taxes or increases in our state taxes, but they happen every year. Just important to note. So where do we go next? Well, you'll see, you have seen an agenda action item for tonight to adopt the, adopt this, this proposed final budget. And again, I'll reiterate like I did at Finance Committee last week, it's a checkbox item, it's a checkbox approval. Why? Because we, we, the board is required to adopt a proposed final budget at least 30 days before adopting the final, final, final budget. Did I say that correct? I did, making sure. I don't know if they have all those finals in there, but you get the idea. So that's a checkbox. And we can continue working on the budget all the way up until the gavel drops and you guys vote, and, and that's how that works. But we are shooting for a May 23rd adoption, which we have in the past, that final board meeting at the end of May, so that my office and the tax collectors have enough time to prep, to prep the duplicate and the tax bills to get them out on time for the 1st of July. And then, of course, all the other things that go on in between there, which are also checkbox items. But with that, do you have any questions, comments?
Thank you very much for that, and thank you for the time that you take to present that to, during the committee meeting also, where a lot of discussion went on and here tonight. So I appreciate that. Board to comment or discussion?
So after the Finance Committee meeting that we had, I, I did some, some digging and reflecting and what have you, and I just want to go back to when there was a surplus for the the, the facility that, that was applied as a one-time help to bring down the rate. And I think that, you know, we're still, I, I think it would be very a derelict a duty to go to 3.8% to our community. So what I'm asking is, what is the feasibility of taking that one-time profit or surplus from the sale of PTC and injecting that into our budget to impact that rate? What's the feasibility of doing that? Or even, I mean, I know that that typically goes into the capital reserve, and I would assume that the balance of, you know, the surplus that we, the small surplus that we have from this year, if we took those two together, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at, you know, a million dollars, which would help bring that rate down.
It would, this year. Next year, you pay for it twice.
But I, I get that, but we also
But what I'm saying is that when you kick the can, each year, the can gets heavier and bigger. So if you're gonna kick the can and pull a million dollars out of this budget, that means you have to put the million dollars next year, you have to put that million dollars back into the budget. And then, if the board so chooses to replenish the funds that you took out, this year, you also have to put that back in as well. So you're almost getting a double hit next year.
I, I hear what you're saying, but the fitness center money. So you're saying that we're paying that back in this budget? Are we paying that back in this budget?
We paid it back. Yes, we did. We paid it back in this budget. The fitness center money was about $960,000 that was left over from that project. That was going back into the capital reserve anyway. Right? Okay, so initially, the idea was to, let me, let me, I have to take a step back even farther. The year before that, what we did was we pulled $500,000 off of what was going to be transferred into the capital reserve. So instead of doing $1.5 million in 2020, we were only gonna do a million dollars. Right? So the next year, when budget time comes along, we want to get back to our one and a half million dollars, right, that we normally put in there to fund projects, you know, putting roofs on buildings and those types of things.
I mean, we had a lot of technology.
No, it has nothing to do with technology. That one and a half million dollars was strictly for Mr. Hunter's project, property, property type projects. So when we put a million dollars, when, when we decreased that amount from a million doll, from a million five down to a million, we took $500,000 out of that budget that we needed to put back in the following budget, which is this year's budget, right? So we went from one and a half million to one million to one and a half million, right? What we also needed to do to replenish the funds that we didn't put in in that year was another $500,000. That's where that leftover money from, from the, from the, the fitness center came in, from the phys ed center came in. So we didn't have to bump the budget $2 million to make up there. We only kept it at that, at that $1.5 million. And we applied half of that money that was left over against that to replenish. Because the original $960,000 was considered spent anyway.
You lost me, I, I have to say, frugally honest. Okay. And so, so that money that was left from the fitness center had to go into capital reserve.
That's where it came from originally. That's where it was done.
That had to go back there. That's my point. This money from PTC didn't come from capital reserve. It's likely a one-time injection because we're not gonna see that. As, as we've said, we don't see, you know, sales that happen like that on a regular basis that we can plan and count on that for every year. What I'm saying to you is if, since that was unexpected and not planned for, why does that have to go to capital reserve? Why can that not be injected?
I never advise spending one-time money on operational expenses. That's why, because they're short-lived. Eventually, your bank account's gonna run out. That's why. Take those monies, and Mr. Jackson can talk more when, probably when he does his property report. But you take those monies, you pop them into the capital reserve for that list of projects that is coming down the pike. So maybe we won't have to borrow as much to, you know, to re-outfit or to, you know, rebuild or something along those lines. But I never advise, and I was strongly not advise, taking non-operational one-time deals and applying them to continuing operations and expenditures.
I understand.
That, eventually, the, the road runs out.
I, I understand that, but I'm, I'm also thinking that in terms of, you know, doing the projects and things of that sort, that we're gonna need to look at, at the debt service there. And that would be at a different time, obviously, and not relevant to this, but I have a problem setting aside this money to go towards that when I know that's hanging in the wings. Does that, does that make sense to you?
I understand what you're saying. But again, in, in order to apply that, you have to apply that to an ongoing operational expense. So you're gonna decrease an ongoing operational expense for this coming year that you're gonna have to re-up the following year. So you're, and, and we're not planning on those one timers coming back in again. So you're gonna fall short. So yeah, you may decrease where we are this year, but you're gonna double it the next year.
We're gonna double it, but what if we applied it specifically to the amount we're putting into the capital reserve?
You're still decreasing your operation budget. In other words, each, each year, we budget for, which is included in here, we budget to move one and a half million dollars. It's included in Mr. Hunter's budget to move one and a half million dollars from his operating budget, which is ongoing operating expenses, into the capital reserve. If you reduce that, you reduce, either, you're either going to reduce what's in the capital reserve in the long run, or you're gonna take a real big hit down the road.
I'm not, I'm not looking to, to reduce that. I'm just looking to say, hey, this, this unexpected windfall, in a sense, has come our way this one time. What is the best way to use that money? That's
My opinion is to put it in the capital reserve for those future projects that are coming down, coming down the road, which are quote unquote, one-time projects. Or at least longer-lived projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fink, could you put slide 17 back up?
Not without Rich's help.
I guess my question there is this amount, the surplus from PTC is approximately $800,000, $600,000. So I think slide 17 would show us how that would impact
Slide 17.
Taxpayers.
Oh, oh, I see. Yeah, that one.
So for $1.1 million, you can get a 1% decrease. So we're looking if we were to put the whole $600,000, maybe not, but at the most under the 1.1 million. So I'm just kind of looking at where you break it down into per month or per year, what an actual cost in the hands of the taxpayers would be.
Roughly $15.
Thank you.
I guess as the Chair of Finance, and I don't think it's a dereliction of duty. We work, the numbers, the math is math. There's nothing fancy with the numbers that, that have been presented. It represents the cost to operate the district. As I mentioned in the Finance Meeting, the Finance Committee will make a recommendation. At that time, the board can do whatever the board wants to do with our recommendation. You can raise it, you can request that it is lowered, but what's being presented is what represents the operating cost for the district. We have a great district. It comes with a cost. People want great programs in our district. They want outstanding teachers. They want great buildings for the kids to learn in. All of that comes All of that comes with a cost. And the cost that's, that has been presented here, again, is the cost that it takes to operate the district. As Mr. Fink said, this isn't over, but this is a snapshot of where we are right now. We still have the May 10th meeting. And I would advise board members now, you know, tell your spouses, you're not coming home that night. We're going to be there as late as we need to be to get to your number. And then the following week, that number will be presented to the board. And the board will make the decision on where we go.
Maybe it would be good to switch property and finance that night so that property can still have their meeting at 6:30.
I have no objection to that. That's fine. Since I'm Chair of Property, we're not giving up any money this year, just so we know that.
Dr. Wright, I just want to clarify, because it's not in the action item, but it would be good to reflect in the minute. Are we, is this proposed final budget reflecting the 3.8% mileage increase or 3.4?
3.8.
Okay, clarify.
Yes, and in clarification also is that this is just our proposed budget at this time that we are, would be voting to approve at the 3.8. It is not the final budget.
This is just for process. This has, there's plenty more to come.
And also, Mr. Jackson, please feel free, if you think that we would need to schedule another meeting at all for finance, please feel free to do that.
Yes, and one last thing I'd like to leave the board with, and I've said it a half dozen times in the committee meeting. Again, the board can do as they see fit. There are three buckets. If you want to make reductions, there are three buckets. It's called three Ps, programs, personnel, and projects. Like I said, that's the three buckets that if you want to look at making any changes, that's where your reductions will come from.
Yeah, and just for some context, having done this dance a few times now, not to diminish sharpening the pencils and everything, but essentially, if you go back to a few slides, you know, roughly 70% of the budget is personnel. And we are contracted or otherwise committed to essentially a $4 million increase. And unless, and that's sort of what's bolted to the floor presently. So when you look at the other two buckets, that's where conversations can be had, and I look forward to participating in those. You know, but it's, we're dealing with 30% basically. And, and, and it's, it's hard to want to continue in a certain mindset and deliver, delivery to our community when those two areas, in addition again to personnel are so, are so important. So anyway, just sharing some context on that.
And one last thing, what Ms. Zosowski said, that's an option. If the board decides to go that direction, the board can go that direction. But let's be real clear. The individual that we chose to lead our district from a financial perspective has been very clear in his position of not recommending that. But the board has latitude to do whatever they see fit.
That's, that's correct. And then also, I just, to add on to what Mr. Schaefer said, and maybe to reinforce what Mr. Jackson said, that yes, 70% of our budget is clearly allocated to personnel. And in the past, as painful and horrible as it has been, we have talked about backfilling retirees. We have talked about the needs of the district. Have they changed? Are we able to provide the quality level of service that we want to provide with different numbers? So I wouldn't say that the personnel bucket is completely off the board, but off the table. But I do think that it's, it's less tangible maybe for us as opposed to looking at the other two, which equally, we don't want to do anything awful there that's going to compromise the integrity of the district. We just have to balance this, right? We have to balance this as best we can.
Mrs. Harman's.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Fink. I just want to reiterate something because I know that 3.8 can be jarring when you look at that. I think it's been really good conversation at the table. I'm looking forward to talking about this morning committee next month. But when you, you know, I think along the way with the adopting the budget, there's been some checkboxes that we've had to just go ahead and check off. With regards to, for example, like January 24th, when we adopted the preliminary budget, I think there were some questions among the community around, like, why aren't we asking more questions? Are we okay with this number? And I just want to rest assured with the community that we are not okay with 3.8. We're going to be doing a lot of work behind the scenes between now and then to figure out how do we get that tax impact down? And as Mr. Clinton said, right, we, in the end, it's, Mr. Jackson, thank you. Mr. Jackson said, we're going to be, you know, bringing a recommendation forward. We're going to be having the board decide ultimately how we vote on that. And I just don't want the community to think that because we're not asking questions, doesn't mean that we aren't doing our due diligence behind the scenes. Because this is, as Mrs. Dr. Wright mentioned, this is the second or third time that some of us are hearing this presentation. So thank you.
Just to, just to clarify, behind the scenes means at the committee meetings. It's not in a private session. It's not behind.
Which you're all invited to attend.
Yes, those are public meetings. Thank you for that clarification, of course. Mrs. Dardor.
I just had a question regarding the tax bills in July. Are we planning on again, including notification about the tax rebate in those letters?
Yes.
And I, are my notes accurate in that previously, there was only three community members that participated? But last year, since adopting that practice of sending out the letters, we had 150 residents participate.
That's approximately right, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other board comment? Thank you very much. We will now move on to our second presentation tonight. It is Mrs. Nunnabiller, who is our 5, 6, 7 Building Principal. And she will be doing a presentation today on the scope of the New Countries and Cultures Club at the 5, 6, 7th Grade Center. Thank you.
Before you start, first of all, to the students, was that not fantastic? That presentation beforehand, huh? I mean, so glad you were here for that, right? Very lucky. Maybe next time we have them go first. I'm just suggesting it. But anyway, glad you're still awake. Thank you for being here.
So like Mr. Jackson said, we have a great school district. We have great teachers. And so two of them are with me today, Samita Basitakar, as well as Courtney Jacoville. And they are the, the two teachers that run our cultures, Countries and Cultures Club. The Countries and Cultures Club kind of came from a couple different areas. But one of the things that was brought to the 5, 6, 7 about three, four years ago now, because we have to go pre-COVID, was our multicultural Thanksgiving. And we did our multicultural Thanksgiving, Dr. Koch, it was her baby. And, and we have been doing it. Unfortunately, with COVID, we ended up having to stop that. But we're bringing it back next, next Thanksgiving. And the Countries and Cultures Club will be part of that. So this year, we were able to bring them back a little bit more this year. And they're going to talk about one of the community things that they did this year. But before they start, I wanted to show you this little passport. How many of you would love to travel in a high-speed jet and travel to 18 different countries in the matter of 45 minutes? And that's exactly what I did. So I went to 18 different countries and had tour guides all through in the 18 different countries. And three of those tour guides are here with me today. So Mrs. Jacoville, I will have you begin our little tour.
Thank you. So we started this club because we both had prior experiences in our district outside of Springfield. Prior teaching experience where multicultural celebrations were huge successes. And so last year, due to COVID restrictions, we couldn't have the in-person club. So we had students create videos at home where they had the opportunity to share their heritage and cultures. And then our wonderful Springfield Communications Department put together a video and shared it with our community. So hopefully, you were able to see that last year. This year, we were fortunate enough to have an in-person club. And it was open to the 5, 6, and 7th grade students. We met in my classroom for one hour for 10 weeks on Thursday afternoons.
Unlike any club, we started by getting to know each other and setting our goals. Members played games and reviewed our objectives, which included gaining knowledge about other countries and cultures, learning about ourselves, learning about others, appreciating our differences, and gaining research and presentation skills. We also spent our first two meetings learning about different aspects of cultures and the world's geography, specifically continent and countries.
I love this club. I love learning about other cultures. I want students to do the same. Because in the end, I want to let them to figure out that, yes, even though we're different, we come from different countries, different cultures, we are the same. So our, the sum of our differences is less than the sum of our similarities. That's what I want them to learn from.
We each chose a country we would like to further research, either based on interest, family heritage, or both. We spent three meetings researching different aspects of our chosen countries, including geography and culture. The rest of the meetings were spent creating trifold boards, displaying our research, and practicing presenting our information.
In culmination, we organized an Epcot-style experience for all of our members to share their boards with one another and also their families. Each participant was given the passport that you saw, and they could travel through the countries, gaining cultural experiences along the way. There was food, clothing, pictures, books, games, and more for participants to enjoy in each country. Members stamped each passport as the community traveled.
Some kids have heritage from their country. They have stories about their great-grandparents or stories about their parents that came here and they're sharing their culture. But other kids just were interested in another country that they don't know about. And so they were able to bring in things from the internet. They were able, some of them even found people in the community, interviewed. And so they have stuff to share as well.
There are 18 countries about. There are about 28 students involved. Some of them researched the countries together. And we have a lot of European countries, some Asian countries, one South American country, African country. So we told them not to look into Wikipedia. They looked into National Geographic. I
I chose to research Thailand and really enjoyed the experience because I learned more about different cultures, made new friends, and learned more about my family. I have been speaking with many other students about the experience in the Countries and Cultures Club. They are now very interested in joining next year.
Okay, I guess I have to move this down. So going forward, we hope to make this opportunity available to more and more students each year across grade levels and schools. Our children, our students are growing up in an increasingly diverse society where they will interact with, from, with people from many different countries and cultures. We have to work together to equip our students for global citizenship. We hope that our Countries and Cultures Club gives our students a little peek into that diverse world and helps them realize that we are much more similar than we are different. Thank you very much.
So and then what we did was there is, our Communications Department did put a video together so that will be out. The entire video is about six minutes long. So we figured, you know, we'll let Mr. Fink do his presentation. I'll keep the whole video for later. And then we had all of the trifolds within the building so that all of the students could look at all the differences. I will say, you did see Russia up there. And the student said that was pre. So we did, he was very good about it. Had a, had a very good speech with that when he, when he presented. So it was very timely. Students really got to know each other, got to know exactly all the different cultures. And it was an absolutely phenomenal 18 countries in 40 minutes. It was great. So if I, if you have any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Nunnabiller, and thank you to your staff for providing this opportunity for our students. I was, I was very impressed. And so thank you very much, board.
And thank you to the students that presented tonight. That was really fantastic.
All right. All right. Well, thank you very much. So moving forward with our agenda, we have action items. So the action items are O and P. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, thank you. Any questions or comments from board?
Yes, regarding O, we discussed this at the last meeting. It is home and school.
So I want to let Mr. Rizzo address that.
So I actually, as part of my report, I'm going to talk about the findings. You wanted that for this board meeting, so I have that for you. This one is actually an amendment to last month because, because of the cost and where it's coming from. We initially thought it was going to be paid for by home and school. This is actually being paid by the district, which does require it be approved by the board.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So those motions pass. So that means we move on to board and committee reports. Do we have a report from our student representatives?
We do. And I believe we have a presentation to display. There it is. So this is our student report for April, and I'm going to turn it over to Adidi to cover some recent events.
Good evening, everyone. As far as our upcoming events go, our report cards will be released in Skyward tomorrow at 4:00 PM. Additionally, we have a Student Council voter registration drive at the high school on the 20th and 21st, in which Student Council is leading a voter registration effort at the high school in which paper voter, voter registration forms are available in junior and senior house offices. And online registration help will be available during lunches. Additionally, the SFHS Avedum Club will be hosting a self-care night on Friday from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. We also have a district-wide 5K run or walk, which will take place the evening of April 22nd. And as far as the elementary and middle school levels go, we have PSSA ELA testing, which will be administered for students in grades three to eight from April 25th to the 27th. We also have some exciting Senior Decision Day events, which will be held on in the Coach McNelly Stadium on the 29th of April. We also have our musical Matilda Jr., which will be performed at the 9th Grade Center on the 29th and 30th. AP exams will be administered from the 2nd to 13th of May. And senior prom will be on May 14th, followed by the SNAP post-prom.
So some of our recent events. Read Across America Week was observed in Springfield's elementary schools from February 28th to March 4th. Spirit Weeks featured varying themes that encouraged students to read for pleasure throughout the district and our elementary schools. The String Jamboree was on the evening of March 31st, and the fourth marking period commenced on April 1st. We administered an ACT exam at the high school on April 2nd. There was a BMX assembly held at the 5, 6, 7 Center on April 4th. The newest members of Springfield's Chapter of the National Honor Society were inducted on the evening of April 4th. A K-9 Assembly was held at Brook Elementary School on April 7th. The rescheduled junior prom was held the evening of April 8th. And from what I've heard, it was an extremely successful and very fun event that all of the junior students really enjoyed. And there's no school for students April 14th to the 18th for spring break. And I think those are all of the recent events that we had covered. So are there any questions?
Thank you very much, and thank you for including some of the events.
Thank you very much, and thank you for including some of the events that are happening in our elementary schools. That really is very nice to have those here announced. I did attend the String Jamboree along with Mrs. Harmon's and with Mr. Rizzo. It was great fun. Was, was wonderful, and they also, there had been an award. Did we ever announce the music award that had been received at Disney? Was there?
We did not announce.
We did not announce? No? Sit next. I don't know. We need to talk about it? Okay, thank you very much. Any other Board questions, comments?
I have a quick comment. I know they're still looking for volunteers for the post-prom SNAP event, and there's a pretty quick deadline coming up. If you are already volunteering or plan to volunteer, you need to upload your clearances. And please consider volunteering. It should be actually a lot of fun to watch. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. You know, again, third term, sitting around this table, and we've had a lot of great student reps, but you, you two are so prepared. I glanced over at you during Mr. Fink's presentation, and you weren't smiling like you are now. So it's really good to see you smiling. It's fantastic. So the way you present, it's just really impressive, and I just want you to know, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to Mr. Fink.
It's of no actual representation of his presentation styles. It's, it's, you're the best ever. It's probably the topic, I'm guessing.
We should have clapped after Mr. Fink. Remember that for next time.
Any other Board comments? Then we move on to Policy Committee Report, Mrs. Earl.
Yeah, policy met on April eleventh, and we've really made some significant progress. You'll see on tonight's agenda, we have forty-nine policies for retirement. And I should add that some of these, this is the consolidation of us consolidating the three, four, and five hundred policies that were separated between different categories of school employees. So they're now all under, they'll all be under three hundred. So so we've got forty-nine of them being retired. We've got five policies submitted for approval tonight. And what do we got? Like fifteen more that are here for a first reading. This will finish up all the three, four, and five hundred policy consolidations. It will also take us out of the nineteen nineties. We will have completed all of, and we will be starting on the two thousands. I'll tell you, we've made some difference. So I also want to add again, for anyone's, anybody has a question that the policies that are retired are not just going away, they're either consolidated with, with other policies or in the three, four, and five hundred, or they have been addressed as separate policies. So nothing is really, we're not taking anything away. We're just trying to consolidate the number of policies we have. Next meeting will be May ninth at six thirty.
Questions?
I just want to say, welcome back to Mrs. Earl in person.
Thank you.
And I think it's worth mentioning, reminding the public that we review these policies at the policy meet. We have advanced reviews individually where we're not collaborating on them. We're asking questions. And then during the Policy Committee meeting is when we go through them one by one, and again, that is a public meeting. Thank you.
I do have two questions regarding the policies. I'm not sure if I should ask it now or just wait till, till when we get to policy.
It's up to you, I think. You should have the policy. They were in the memo.
I've gone through it. So I have two that I'm, I have questions on. So I could ask it now or I could wait till we get to, to actual policy discussion.
No, we're in the committee report. If you would, not at the policy section of the agenda, but if you feel irrelevant to the report, you may discuss it now. Otherwise, we may wait till policy.
I'll wait till policy. I'll let it build up some.
Suspense here, a little drama. All right, well, that leads us to curriculum and technology, if there's no other policy questions, which is my report to give in, in our meeting, which was on Monday, April eleventh, and lasted two hours. We get the record, I think, for the longest because we're the most important committee. With technology, we discussed the Smart Panel Project, which was a continuation of the Smart Board implementation plan. That is currently not on our agenda right now, but it's something that we are pursuing, technology. You will see contract renewals on the agenda for several of our products. These are annual contract renewals purchased through Technology Operating Budget. There is a, we talked about storage refresh, the updated servers, newer technology, encryption, and off-site backup, which is a capital expenditure. We also talked about the pen testing, which is a test for weaknesses in our security and recommendations. This is not on the agenda, but we're currently evaluating the various options to be compliant with our cyber insurance for that. So that's the technology part. I think I got all of technology. Checking with my committee members there with curriculum. Mr. Brett Slyfer came. He's our fourth-grade band director and shared details about our summer band program, our opportunity that will be available for students completing grades four through six. So you will have more information that will be forthcoming about that. I think that was very exciting. Dr. Rob Moyer shared information about our ELD, our English Language Development Programming. The committee recommended that the administration continue planning to be able to support the long-term growing English language student population. We have seen great increases, and we anticipate we will continue to. And we have been warned at the state level to consider potential Ukrainian students and their needs that may come into our community. Dr. Collier came and talked about our Global Studies, and he shared an update regarding the opportunity for international travel with Arcadia University for students that take at least one of the two courses that are offered for this Global Studies, and the trip that we'd be taking, they would be taking would be to Belize. That is very exciting. So. Dr. Reinheimer shared information about the new Pennsylvania science standards that will take effect July first of twenty twenty-five. The curriculum supervisors are working to align resources, curriculum maps, and provide professional development for teachers. We have already been, you know, preparing for this. PDE, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, has been releasing information. We'll continue to do so for that, so that we can transition with our new, to our new science standards. Lot going on there. Mrs. Gardi provided information regarding a new math product that is being proposed to the educational technology. And I believe this is the one, if I'm correct, that replaces, the replacement for iReady. So if you may recall, previously, the Board had directed the administration to take a look at, at the product, the iReady, and the costs, some cost reductions, and perhaps eliminating some redundant or little-used products. So you will see this on the agenda, and it is paid for fully from ESAR money that was specifically earmarked as a digital product that needed to be purchased, a digital product to be purchased for, specifically for learning loss. So that will be on the agenda. And then curriculum renewals. Mrs. Gardi provided information regarding the annual curriculum renewals, which I believe some are also on this agenda to be voted on. So did I get everything, Dr. Murray? Good. All right, Mrs. Carvey. Good. Thank you. Any questions about curriculum and technology?
With that piece that's replacing the iReady, was there anything else that's being retired also?
I'm going to defer to Katie Gardi. Her and her team did a lot of work with really reviewing the resources. So I know that's part of her plan, which is where we were able to come up with some of the money. So I'm going to defer to her on this.
Can you, yeah, there we go. So yes, we have a couple of products. If we pass this, we will be able to not renew those. Some of the products we use at the hybrid learning schools would be redundant. So if we have this, this will be for K to eight, reading, math, and language arts for all students. But right now, we have a couple of products that we use at our hybrid schools that we would no longer need.
All right, and if there are any other questions about it? All right, and we can also certainly, as we're looking through the agenda, if there's questions, we can answer those. Our next meeting will be Monday, May ninth at seven thirty. And that takes us to Finance with Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. I will do a clip-note version of the financial report, and I want to go over what Mr. Fink did in his presentation. The finance meeting met on April twelfth. It was well-attended, and we had a total of three individuals on Zoom, and one happened to be Miss Earl. So we had two outside community members that attended on Zoom, just sharing a love. There's one committee item that needs to be addressed by the Board. We need to do an agreement with the Limerick Township for the summer camp where the participants are ninety percent Springford families outside of the Policy seven oh seven, as it is done with the YMCA for childcare. Finish through Policies seven oh seven with total thirty thousand dollars per year, which would not be sustainable. The recommendation is seventy-five hundred for twenty twenty-two, fifteen thousand each for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six. And the committee will did move this forward for approval by the Board. That's the only item that I am going to discuss regarding the finances. Mr. Fink has done a great job of reviewing the, reviewing the budget, with the exception of when we meet next week, we will make the adjustments for property and finance. And I asked Board to come with with a lot of, a lot of ideas, so we can sit down and try to evaluate the budget and come up with a agreeable percentage from the committee. And that's it for Finance.
Any questions about Finance? What are, what are those three buckets?
Three Ps: personnel, property, personnel, projects, and programs.
We want to move on to property with Mr. Jackson.
Property was not well-attended. Not sure why. And except for the members, and we had no, we had Miss Earl, who was always there. We had one Zoom member, Ms. Rosowski. Some of the items that were talked about, those, the Spring City Strategic Planning Presentation. Our engineer consultant, ICS, made a presentation to the administration on March fourteenth in a kickoff meeting to discuss the purpose and the planning process with the goals of identifying what is the best option where, where we could address major facility needs for Spring City, which would be a new building renovation addition. There was also a discussion regarding the teacher, the, the teacher furniture replacement plan for the year purchased to Kurt Brothers for a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars through CoStar, but come through the Capital Reserve Budget, I'm sorry, the Capital Reserve Purchase, having budgeted for for the twenty-one, twenty-two physical year will be on the agenda for approval. There was also discussions regarding the upcoming year, the need for four small group instruction classrooms and a plan of subdividing two classrooms into four rooms. This is at Oaks Elementary, and we'll have more details in the proper meeting. And there was discussion regarding the ISS camera plan, Phase One, that was presented by Chief Warrior, which will be on the agenda for approval. Along with one other item, sorry, the custodial emergency overtime compensation. So those are the four items that would be on the agenda before approval by Board. That's it.
Any Board questions? Moving on to the Western Montgomery County Technical Center.
Yes. So the JOC met on April fourth. There was an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss personnel. There, while in that meeting, Mr. Livinggood, our new executive director there, did announce that he was offering a visit or tour of the, of the school on the eleventh, and that was prior to teacher negotiations later that afternoon. So there were many of us that did attend that tour and get a bird's-eye view of what he has been referencing is needed in terms of repairs. But again, I'll go back to the efforts that Mr. Hunter made to interact with Mr. Livinggood. And really, I think the message has gotten across that we want to see a plan. We don't doubt that Mr. Livinggood is definitely noticing some areas that need attention in, in Western, but we want to see it on paper, and let's prioritize, and let's make sure that we're doing what we need to do first, first. So I think that he's on board with that. He also announced some highlights from recent conferences and our students from all three districts who placed for different, for different events, as well as Mr. Holtzman, who was our new principal there. He also highlighted student achievements at some of the recent contests, the Geek Contest that was, that was recent also. We also had a presentation from Mr. Schuler, our Limerick Fire Chief, who presented on a very high-level plan for a firehouse project building over at, on the, on the grounds of the Western Center. It was decided later that the members of the JOC are not going to be coming back to the full boards to pursue that plan at this time. The reason being is that there are some, there are just many aspects to that process, if, if that was going to take place, and we don't feel that that plan is truly developed enough to bring it back to all members of the sending districts. So that has been shared with Mr. Schuler. Donna Wilson, Mrs. Wilson, did present the budget at the Western Center. And as I said in Finance the other night, I'm still talking with them to see what, if anything, can be negotiated or shaved off the cost to our district in particular. So those conversations will continue to happen. There was an update on applications and spots for the new school year, and both, both of those, both applications to the tech school and to the spots that are available have increased. And I did ask Mr. Holtzman, who presented this, why he thought that was happening. And he really did say that his understanding from his counterparts in other, in the other vocational schools, is that a lot of that was due to COVID. There were people that were, that were sitting there and thinking, college, 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 and the kids were saying, we want to do something different, and why accumulate that debt? So there was some, there was an exploratory phase that perhaps took place during COVID. So the number of applications has dramatically increased over at the Western Center. There were a couple of items that were approved. Charleston landscaping was approved for lawn care services. There is a Quest program that was approved to evaluate the high, the school's technology. And there was a letter that was going to be approved by our solicitor over there. The Teamsters contract was approved. We continue to work through negotiations and have our, our very own Mr. Fitzgerald there walking us through that process for the teachers' negotiations. So our next meeting will be on Monday, May second. There is also a community dinner. The, the community dinners are back. There is one on Cinco de Mayo, May fifth, and it is obviously going to be a Mexican theme that night. If you would like to go, you do need to make reservations for the four-thirty sitting or the six o'clock PM sitting. And that's all I've got. Any questions?
I have a couple. So the Fire Training Center discussion is shoved now. There's, as far as where Springport stands.
As far as where any of the districts stand, the JOC will not be going back to the sending districts about that project. It is just not developed enough to really take that any further at this time. It's a great idea. Mr. Schuler has a great idea. It, it's just not developed enough to... It, it's just not developed enough to bring back any kind of a proposal at this time.
I don't think there was anybody at that meeting that felt that they could go forward with a decision because I, I came away from it. What's in it for us? I don't mean spring forward, but for the, for the Western Center in, in general, I just really didn't. It, it was all about, and, and there's neighborhood considerations. There's just so much to look at that it, it's going to be, I would say several months before it comes back to the boards.
There's also no funding that has been scheduled for, arranged for any of that at this time established. There's been not, there's no funding there. There were a lot of questions, as Mrs. Earl said, about the neighborhood concerns. There's questions about land development, liability, insurance issues. There, there are so many questions that in some respects, it felt like he was putting maybe the cart before the horse. So I, I do think that as, as a high level thought, it's, it's not a bad idea. I just think that, you know, let's start with answering the questions of how does this benefit our students? How does this benefit the sending districts? That information wasn't clearly laid out nor.
No, they didn't even touch on it, really.
Yeah, so, so that, that's not moving forward.
And this plan from the executive director, what's the potential cost with that or he's asking for or?
So the. So.
It's a trick question.
It is a trick question. And I just want to say that there will be more information coming in May. ICS is doing, is working with Mr. Livinggood to put together in writing for his protection and for our protection. What needs to be addressed first? And then how that is going to be paid for. There are some scenarios that could potentially address that. But we need to see what those major concerns are first that come out of ICS. And, and Mr. Hunter was really great to share that information and do that introduction with Mr. Livinggood and the, and ICS.
All right, thank you. Just briefly, how can the community make reservations for those community dinners? Is it an easy link?
Thank you.
Strong assumption, but is there a particular link that is there? Is it easy to find? Is it a fishing exercise?
You know what, I can, I can send it over to you.
Email to us, but I don't.
It's also on our Facebook page.
For those of us that don't participate on that social media platform, that doesn't help either. But all right, I guess I'm on my own.
I'm going to send you the invitation that.
Appreciate that.
But for the community, if anybody would like to go seriously, it is on the Facebook page, on the website. Or at the very, you know, you can always call, yes.
And it's not free.
No.
That's what you were looking for.
Thank you so much for that, Claire. No, I was not, but I'm excited that these are happening again and I want to support that. So it's great to see the students and they're, it's, it's, it's a great experience for.
They're excited too. I, I would say they're really pumping this up over at Western. It was. Yeah, it was, it was out a few.
Twenty dollars a person we're hearing. And, and I think, Mr. Rizzo, you can make that available on our, our website.
It's on their website. Ms., Ms. Crew just sent me a link to a reservations or email only. She will put in the weekly update just as an extra layer, but it is on their website, their school calendar.
Thank you.
And further clarity, there's no margaritas, I'm assuming. Okay, all right.
All right, any, any other questions or comments regarding that report? Not then, Mr. Rizzo, your superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. You know, if you've been watching the news, there have been, there has been some talk about increasing cases and some discussions about indoor mask mandates and things coming back. And I just wanted to kind of let the community and our board know where we are right now. So as you know, we follow CDC's guidelines since kind of the end of February. And they really had three metrics that we follow. Community per hundred thousand in Montgomery County and that the target number there is to be under two hundred. The total inpatient bed utilization percentage that are COVID hospitalizations. And then, and then per hundred thousand COVID hospital admissions. So I will give you our stats, you know where we are. You're either going to be low, medium or high. When it first came out, that first week we were medium, we've been low ever since. This past week's information, COVID inpatient bed utilization. You need to be over ten percent for it to be something that we start to pay attention to, we're one percent. For COVID hospital admissions per hundred thousand, you need to be over ten for us to pay attention, be a little bit concerned. We're at two point eight on the average cases per hundred thousand, which really only indicates how we look at those first two metrics. Again, under two hundred, we're at sixty nine point six eight. So we are well in the low range, even though we're starting to hear about some of our other communities arising. Montgomery County might see small rises here and there, but it's no cause for concern at this point. Just wanted to share a little piece of information with you. Second, as Mr. Jackson alluded to earlier, we did, so what our approaches are going to be moving forward. So I did reach out to Mr. Fitzgerald for some more information to talk about what the most viable option would be for us. So there's a few caveats. So if the contract is between the district and the vendor, and that is using our standard independent contract agreement. It would still need to be approved by our board because our name is attached to it. And that's regardless who pays for it. If the contract is between the home and school organization and the vendor. And is also funded by the home and school or any other outside entity, this would not be board approved. Their process would be completing a building usage form, which we handle internally, that doesn't come to the board. Generally, anytime we're paying for a vendor and or are attached to an agreement in some capacity, we're going to have to come to the board for approval. So that you know, moving forward, as we make this switch, there's going to be a little bit of overlap. You'll start to see some that have kind of this past practice on there, but we are working to make that shift with the buildings. Okay. Last thing I have for you, just in general, we are nearing the end of our twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. And the next few months will be filled with our end of year activities and events for all of our students. Including the unofficial end of year kickoff for seniors, which is decision day, as our, as our representative spoke to. Spring Four's decision day started in two thousand and fifteen and was held in the Future Planning Center. Since then, decision day has outgrown the Future Planning Center and is, and, and the high school cafeteria and is now held in our own McNelly Stadium. On the field, seniors and their families are invited to celebrate their future plans, whether it's a two-year, four-year college or university. Entering the workforce or one of our military branches. This is, this year, decision day will be held on April twenty ninth. And from there, we will enter a whirlwind of end of year activities, including elementary concerts, field days, fifth, sixth, seventh grade extravaganza, senior events and much, much more. It's important for families to read the emails from their schools and the weekly update to stay current on everything that is happening between now and the end of the school year. Very exciting times, we're very excited for all of those things and they're in person.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board table? And that leaves our solicitor's report from Mr. Fitzgerald.
Dr. Wright, just very briefly, we're keeping our eye on two cases right now, which I think are minor headline cases, shall we say? I, I mentioned with you guys about three, four weeks ago, the Westchester matter. The substantive discussion or debates on that will be forthcoming with the judge in Chester County. There are additional petitions in Chester County for other districts. So more to come on that, that'll be very interesting to see. The I'm, I'm, there was obviously the procedural issues. I'm more concerned with the substance. And we hopefully will have some decision on that sooner than later, as that's hanging out there, especially for districts in Chester County. The other case, which got some headlines back in November and kind of peaked again over the last few weeks was that Pennsbury First Amendment matter. If you recall back in November, there was a preliminary injunction surrounding the practices of the board as relates to public comment. That, that resulted in a decision then. Well, we just got a, a, a further decision from the judge where the district sought to dismiss the case. And that was denied. Typically speaking, once you get through that motion to dismiss phase, insurance companies get a little nervous and there may be a settlement. But ultimately, the case law has now established what we've, we've talked about. And that is guidance from Pennsbury is we had to revisit and everybody has to revisit. A, a, a PSBA policy that was in place surrounding comment. I think we are in good place here. But nevertheless, that Pennsbury decision has had an impact on the districts, all in the Eastern District. We'll keep an eye on that, should that continue.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from the board table? All right, with that, we move on to the next part of our agenda, which is the, the minutes. Are there any board questions or comments regarding the minutes? Then we're moving on to section six, which is personnel. Under personnel on numbers N or letters and through Q, there is a change to the ending date on all four of those. The date says June third, it is June thirtieth. That will be corrected for the agenda. That is under personnel items N through Q. They have an effective date of July first to June thirtieth, not June third. So that'll be amended on the, for the agenda next week. June thirtieth, yes. Finance. Any questions or concerns regarding finance? Moving on to property.
Oh, sorry. Number thirteen, I think might be missing the cost.
Number thirteen, under. Right, under D thirteen, should it be a cost associated with that? D twelve has a cost.
Yeah, all of them. Or zero, at least it says.
We'll get that updated.
Okay, thank you. Anything else under? Finance?
Property? I have a question on B. So I don't know if Mr. Hunter is on the line, but I know that one of the things that came out, although I was observing as the public, not as a committee member. One of the things that came out of the property meeting was an itemized list of, you know, what is needed from a equipment standpoint at each of the schools. And I know that that was in the board memo and I see that here. My only question is, and I think we alluded to this a little bit, but in terms of like the useful life of this specifically, you know, on, on average. It sounds like that these items have far beyond exceeded their useful life. Could you just clarify that, Mr. Hunter, if you're on the line?
I am on the line, thank you. Yes, all the furniture that we're looking at is twenty plus years old.
Do we have a furniture expert in the room that could speak to whether or not twenty years is excessive, normal or light? I believe the general consensus.
Kind of my follow-up question is just in terms of like, it's twenty years, to what extent is it still like?
My dining room set's forty years old.
Yeah.
Your dining room set doesn't get near the traffic that a teacher's desk does. So, but I, I think that, you know, just speaking as a committee member and, and hearing that, this is far overdue.
Thank you.
Any other questions on, on property? Okay, then moving on to programming and curriculum. I did want to point out on B, that this is the second year plan of, the second year of the plan of the course blending. That we had previously been approved with Esser money. This is where we are having our, our teachers are right to the curricular programming for our cyber schooling. And so instead of being dependent upon ingenuity, which we would pay for those services, we'll have our own product, which will align with our curriculum. And put us in a better position. So this was money that had previously been earmarked through the Esser grant. Did I cover all of that, Dr. Murray? Thank you. I also wanted to comment on C. That this was the, the approval for the. Edmentum Exact Path Math Reading and Language Arts. The total cost not to exceed the two hundred twenty five thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars. And that is for all three years. And I feel like I'm missing something on that, was there something else on that? On, maybe it's Mrs. Gardi, did I cover everything on C? I did, okay.
Dr. Wright, one question on C.
Yes.
Year four, what's, what's the projected cost moving forward? This, this cost covers year three and everybody's happy. So what is the cost when we get to projected cost? If you don't know for year four, five or six?
We were ready for that because we knew that was coming. So I know that Katie Gardi has been looking at her curriculum projections. I'm going to let her speak to that as well, she can talk to more detail.
Yes, Mr. Jackson, yes, when I worked with Mr. Fink and looked at our eight-year projection, I added this into that forecasting. And as we had talked about, some of the other products are rolling off, even some of the requests for this approval coming for this year. We're going to continue to evaluate, pull some of those off over the next couple of years based on pull offs of contracts we're in already. So that is being forecasted for year four and beyond.
Thank you.
And if you're looking also on Q through T, those are the technology renewals that we had talked about. Any questions on curriculum?
I, I have a question on R. The, the VHS. I, I don't want to confuse this with ingenuity, which was. Remember when we were back and we were starting the cyber and we were, we were still stuck in that one? That's not the same contract here.
No. Sorry, I think you're referring to P. No, this is. That's okay, this is, this is not the same thing as ingenuity. This is used in the instance that we need to offer students courses that we don't currently have.
Right.
That was, it was V L N that we had before. Yeah, not, not V H S.
It's widely known that Colleen struggles with consonants and vowels.
Apparently I do, I didn't even get P and R right. So yeah, I mean, I'm very consistent though, so.
Any other questions from the board on curriculum or technology? All right, moving on then to conferences and workshops, questions?
So just to clarify, we don't have V L N anymore, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, and then on to other business. Any questions or comments regarding other business?
Do have a comment on item C one, specifically policy zero zero five point one. So there was comment made and public comment with regards to this board needing to. Understand what's important to them as it relates to the experience for our public in committee meeting. So this is actually something that I had brought up in policy meeting, not last month, but the previous month. Because I wanted to get clarification from Mr. Fitzgerald or Mr. Rizzo with regards to. You know, there is a distinction between a board meeting and a work session versus a committee meeting, right? Board meetings and work sessions are, are held in public and for the public, whereas committee meetings, our meetings are held in public, but they are our working meetings. To get the work of the district done. So my question is, and Mr. Fitzgerald or Mr. Rizzo, whoever. You did do some research and you came back to the table with like, what is required from a committee meeting standpoint? Could you clarify that?
Sure, I don't have that email in front of me. But I, I certainly did share one. So fundamentally, a, a committee needs to advertise itself. It needs to have a, a place to hold its meeting, a place for the public to at least be there. It needs to have some level of, of minutes and, and some level of an agenda. We, we check tho, that criteria. Beyond that, the, the committee process is really at a local discretionary function. Whether it be how public participates in those meetings and how they're structured. There, there's a lot of flexibility. Whereas when you're in this session, and this is a, and a new, this is a work session, this is really a committee meeting. This is a committee of the whole right here. So we, what you do actually next week, I, I think is scrutinized more. Now, tonight you did have some action items, like you had the proposed final budget. So it, it made it. it it made it tonight a hybrid type of meeting. But for the most part, your your work session is like a committee meeting and it could be treated such. But obviously, back to the regular committee structure, there's a lot more flexibility as to how you as a board and then how the individual committees want to handle it.
And the reason why I bring this up is because it was pointed out, and and again, I've tried to attend as many committee meetings as I can as a member of public. In addition to the ones that I don't serve on. And I do see that, you know, while we try to give the committee leads flexibility with how they run their meetings, I do think that there is merit to maybe having some ground rules so that the experience for the public who is attending is a little bit more consistent, maybe doesn't have to be questioned where, um, for example, where it was mentioned, hey, I sat at the table in one meeting. I didn't sit at the table another. I just think that um, without having those ground rules set, it is really, you know, you know, we lead to comments like we had upfront. And so this policy in particular is up for first reading. And if you look at this policy, um, what's outlined in there is is identical to how we run our board meetings and work sessions. And I think that it probably is worth between now and when we get this back in front of the board to maybe um, share some opinions with regards to with some of those tactical things. So whether people sit at the table, whether they don't, whether we have public comment in the beginning and the end, or just in the beginning, or just at the end, you know, I I think that it warrants a conversation at some point.
I'd have to agree with that because um, but all the committees are different because some committees get a big audience and some don't get any. And um, I think that's one of the reasons some of this was left up to the committee chair because I know at policy hardly anybody from the public ever comes to that. So anybody that was there, Mr. Cromley's there all the time and you know, would just sit at the table because why not? There's room. But when you get to finance or you get to sometimes property or whatever curriculum technology, especially curriculum technology, there's often someone or someone's giving a presentation. There's no room at the table for the public to sit. So I don't know if if it needs to be, you know, you know, a cookie cutter thing, or if it's left up to to the situation that that's happening during that policy meeting. I I don't know. I don't know where we should stand on that. I guess I.
I I don't know. I I think we can try to do it both ways, maybe. Um, I I don't know if we want just cookie cutter, but I also don't know if we want a case by case basis either. I think that puts a little bit of undue pressure on the committee if an issue presents itself. At at some point, there may be a policy committee meeting that all of a sudden we have 300 people at because it's a controversial policy. We don't know. So then I I think it's a, if we're going to address a policy, which is your your decision exclusively, I think we we'd want to set some form of 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 standardized regulation, recognizing the need to have some flexibility for the chair of the committee.
So would it be possible to um, you know, so this is a first reading. So everybody has a whole week to read that policy and and maybe send it any suggestions. And if there are considerable number of conflicting suggestions, perhaps we take it off next week's agenda and take it back to committee and and uh, talk it over again. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that does. I mean, I I think that this is very timely that we're looking at this now. I think that it's our um, committee meetings are really important. Um, it's so nice to be back to, you know, so much more focused, time to focus on back to the business of of education. And we're trying to get a lot done. I know with our curriculum meeting, sometimes I've been running two hours, which is is it's late for everyone. And so we really try to focus on getting down to business. Other meetings are, as you said, much more casual. But I do think it would, this is a really good opportunity for people, um, you know, on the board to um, you know, express their opinion on it um, for the committee, uh, policy committee. And also to maybe do a little bit of research on what other districts are doing and what Pennsylvania School Board Association recommends and what we're required by law to do so that we are certainly within those guidelines. I think it's, thank you for um, bringing it up, Ms. Hermans, and thank you um, for agreeing um, to look at it with policies committee so thoroughly, Mrs. Earl. Thank you.
All right. Um, as someone who chairs two committees, there are, there's an agenda. I mean, I've looked at this policy. I think we're overthinking this personally, but I respect everyone's opinion. There's an agenda, there are minutes. If the concern is people sitting at the table, then everybody should just say that. Whatever the issue is, well, hear me out, please, because if we asked, if we set the tone in the very beginning, I don't have issues at my meeting, either one of my meetings. If we said, if we set the tone that, okay, the community cannot sit at the table. I personally don't care if the committee that the community sits at the table. I'm a firm believer that I want their input. To me, that's why you have those commitments to get down in the weeds. I respect the position of the board to look at this, but um, you know, to say we need to look at what's required by law, we we're running a simple committee meeting. That's that's all this is. Yeah. I look forward to the comments from the board. But, you know, as of right now, when I looked at that, looked at the policy, there was no, there was no reference in there about structure as far as who sits at the table, who doesn't sit at the table. So going forward, I will run my meetings as I've run in the past until there is a new policy.
And I appreciate this comments. I just want to clarify as not to have my words being taken out of context. My concern is not with people sitting at the table. My concern is with consistency in the experience for those that choose to attend in public. So that was one example. But you know, we can talk about things like public comment at the end where, you know, sometimes we have so much work to be done in these meetings that we're actually shortchanging, or we have a meeting that's right up against it and really shortchanging people's opportunity to comment. So, you know, I question like, should we revisit that to say like, hey, maybe we should have public comment only in the beginning? Is there a need to have it in the end, especially if this is a committee meeting? And again, I don't know what the answer is here because I think we all need to have input, but I just want to clarify, my concern is not with people sitting at the table. It's with consistency.
I'd have to um, confess to being guilty to um, corrupting the system because there's policy, like I said, it's 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 attended by um, the the committee and and sometimes board members. So the the be, you know, one or two people there. And I just felt that while we're going over these policies, if somebody, a commit, a community member has a question, then they should be able to ask the question while we're talking about it because we're going to go through another 15 policies. And by the time you get to the end, then you have to go back and revisit it all over again. So that's why I just said, you know, if anybody has a question or a comment while we're going through the agenda, let's just do it. But then it got out of hand. So um, then it was, it got to be disruptive uh, when there's more people there. So I can see where you would not do that in many committees and and leave it to the end structure. But it probably, that should probably be a structure because then somebody could say, well, at Wendy's meeting, we could do it. And like, yeah, that's just asking for trouble. Yeah.
So other than the structure, has there been issues in meetings that's bringing this to light, or that this is on the radar now? Has something happened in other meetings? I can only speak to my meetings. Um, but has something happened that brought this up that the structure that's in place now isn't working or is impacting the objective of the committees?
I think the comment at the beginning of the meeting is what brought it up. And we're trying to do some preventative, take some preventative action and not have to worry about things like this that shouldn't be taking up our time.
Yeah, that was finance, and I was totally okay with that. That's all.
I think having it on, just being that it is first reading, it's timely and appropriate that we take a thorough look at this policy.
And I just wanted to add, I assumed, and perhaps that's not a good idea. When I joined a meeting that I'm not a committee member of, I wasn't sitting at the table specifically so that it wouldn't impact the perception of the Sunshine Act. So it wouldn't look like we were collaborating as a board versus as a committee member.
No, I don't. I don't think that's, I think we had.
I only, I only assumed that because I was asked to not sit at the table.
Maybe it was, was it a table full?
No.
Well, I think this came up last year or the year before, and it was a matter of board members, whether you're on a committee or not, are totally welcome there and to sit at the table. You just can't vote.
Well, and but there had been a concern, and Mr. Jackson was one of the ones who brought it up, that because our committee meetings were being well attended by board members, that there would potentially look as if there were a quorum at the table. And this was one of the reasons why as a board, um, those that were not on the committee had made, you know, we made the decision to kind of sit back against walls. So it is clear that we are not part of the committee. So again, these are things that we can look at as guidelines if in, going at the policy meeting, so.
Yes. So just for the sake of clarity, so that I understand, next week is kind of officially the first reading of this policy. The second reading would be in the May board meeting, which means we will have a policy meeting in between. So if you want to get your thoughts or ideas to me, then we could take that to policy and talk about that in greater depth before we come forward to the second read. Okay?
Thank you very much for that. There's no other.
Sorry, my, just, I'm so thankful we're not talking about masks, by the way. But I I do have to comment that this is a little silly to me, right? I mean, just having attended a lot of committee meetings. Honestly, sitting at the table to me is about being on time, right? If you don't, if you're there early, you probably get a seat at the table, right? Uh, this is a community meeting. This is for participation. And I think if we have an issue and commit, and it sounds like we have one individual that voiced an opinion, I'm not sure we have a systemic issue. We probably had an isolated issue that I believe has been been clarified. So I'm certainly all in favor of reviewing policies and things of that nature, but I'd hate to see that we're overcomplicating something that I don't perceive has been an issue systemically. That would be, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Um, if there is no other comments on.
No. We're still on policy.
We are still on policy.
Okay. On policy 321, political activities. I looked at it and a concern I have is something I recently noticed that it doesn't address political solicitations. And by that, I mean, in the recent play within the program, there was advertisement by two current politicians. We've had a policy or a basically an agreement that along with a policy that there was no political ads put in our school property and school activities. And there were two current sitting politicians who advertised in that. And that's something we should not be doing because that opens up the door for anyone who's running for anything to, you know, give $5. And now they have, they have a captured audience. And I know that that policy did not address that. So I wanted to bring that up um, for a discussion point.
I I want to piggyback on that a little bit because um, in my former role on this, on this board, um, there had been a current sitting politician who had wanted to enclose something um, in our diplomas at the end of the graduation. And um, it it wasn't, it 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 just, it wasn't fair to the other people that are out there as well to promote any one person. And there was no true benefit to the students. So.
I just, I just want to clarify, just just for purposes of this policy, this policy is specific to employees. It's an employee based. So Mr. Jackson, you bring up a certainly a valid issue. I just thought this policy probably wouldn't capture that that issue. That would likely be in one of our other policies that we could certainly take a look at in terms of that concern.
I would ask then that that policy would, that does address that type of issue.
Mr. Fitzgerald, the reason I brought it up to this item because the individual individuals who are overseeing the the play along with the distribution of these manuals are district employees. So we could be, you know, it could be a slippery slope, but I felt it was appropriate to bring it up at this and and this.
That's fair. That's fair. This, and 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 I think that is worthy to to look at. This is for employees who are furthering their own political interests as I, as I read it. It it might be a separate fact pattern, but worthy looking at, most definitely.
All right. Any other questions about policy?
I was wondering, could Colleen finish her thought?
Sure, Abby. Um, so i in any way, in any case, if you you can't, you can't let one and and not all. And that and I think that you need to show what the benefit would be to the students, which wasn't clearly defined. And there were some other feathers that were ruffled. I'd rather not get into names, but I think that you can't do that for one unless you're going to do it for all. And first and foremost, you have to answer that question, in what way would any of those contributions better the experience of the of the student of the graduate receiving the diploma? And those questions weren't, couldn't be answered last, I I don't know if it was last year or the year before, it was during that craziness. And so it was, wasn't even something that that came, wasn't something that was even pondered. It was, this was presented, this was another person's input on that. And and it just was kind of over before it started. But I just think that it's something that we need to be as a board clear on going forward because I suspect it'll come up again at some point. And, you know, we're either, we either need to do all or not, is is what I'm saying.
I agree. Whereas this policy goes, it could, maybe it isn't clear enough, but it's, it's, I think, to me, the way I look at it is, is that no school employee is to be involved in promoting anyone. And somebody that puts an ad in this, in the play playbill or whatever you call it, is promoting a political cause. I mean, even if they're, even if they don't, wouldn't vote for that person, or they would vote for them. I don't, I don't think it's an issue with this policy, but um, I the the thing with putting stuff in with the diplomas, to me, isn't a running for office thing. It's somebody that I am your current representative and I'm congratulating you on your graduation. It's not saying vote for me. It's 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 congratulating the individual students on their on their graduation. And I think as an elected politician, they have the, you know, the right to do that as long as as long as the school district's, oh, okay, I I don't see, the problem is, is, you know, if this.
Well, I think that it's, it's certainly name recognition is going out there. And I certainly think that especially now more than ever, our um, parents, our community is divided uh, over um, politicians. So they may not welcome that. This isn't about a politician saying congratulations. And if you're going to let one, you need to let all of our of our politicians have that.
Yes, but I'm talking about elected politicians. I'm not talking about people running for office, whoever.
I'm not talking about people running for office. I'm either. I'm talking about elected officials.
So if they put it in the graduation.
What truly would be the benefit to the, to the student? And on that celebratory day, do you want to polarize the community? Because some are in favor and many are not. And and it can go back and forth and can just get ugly. I didn't see the true benefit.
Why would you not want, why would a kid not want to be congratulated by their governor or their senator or something like that?
They're very, they're, I think the community is very divided. And I don't see what the benefits.
Throw it in the trash. I mean, it's just.
But why, why even do it? Why put it out there?
It was, the intention was that it would be included with their diploma?
Well, look at it from this perspective. You never hear from them until graduation. So, so how invested can they really be? I I just think this is something that the board should stay away from. It just was, Ms. Zosowski says, we haven't done this in the past. It it will become a controversial issue. I have a graduating daughter right now. I don't want some politician sticking any pamphlets. She doesn't need to be exposed to that.
I'm just going to go back to the recesses of my mind and probably date myself here. But when I graduated high school and I got my diploma and also my National Honor Society certificate, which I believe was signed by President Clinton at the time, I didn't bat an eye. I was happy to be recognized. I didn't think, what party is this coming from? And should I be thinking twice about why this was done? I was happy to be recognized. And I think, you know, while there are a lot of extenuating factors and circumstances that we could say. ultimately impact this decision. I mean, ultimately, I believe it's about the students. So I don't know if we're going to have further conversation on. I would welcome that.
Well, I would just like to comment that those were special times back then. The, I look forward to having this discussion in policy, though I think this would be something that we should sincerely look at because I think it's a sharp issue. Presently, it we all need to recognize sitting in this seat and at this table is slightly different than what it was during the Clinton presidency. So for those that can remember that. So anyway, yeah, I look forward to having this discussed in in committee.
So if we were going to discuss this further at committee level regarding whether there would be any recognition from would be open to all local politicians, whatever to, then that would, I would see that as something that would happen at Community Relations Committee? As opposed to.
Since I brought it up, it'd be a policy committee. And I would like to look at at our policy on political involvement whatsoever. I can't answer. I just knew it to be a general understanding that we prohibited campaigning at, you know, football games or or any any events. So I would like to continue to keep you know, that sort of understanding. If we don't have a policy, then I certainly would would love to see one that officially separates political activities from the work of educating children.
Mr. Rizzo, don't we have another policy that goes quite a bit into detail on this?
We have a few policies, but they really deal more specifically with the acts of school board members and employees that are not to be promoting politically. We'll take a look at it. I'll meet with Mr. Fitzgerald. We'll work through it together. We'll take it to policy and maybe, you know, you say not many people come to our committee. Maybe this will bring a few more people. So we can.
Sorry, to also reiterate what Mrs. Zosowski said about what what impact does this have on the students? So I would like to, I'm not, I'm not putting anybody on the spot tonight. But perhaps in the discussions regarding a policy for this, that we do hear the student voices on whether it's something they they feel that there's value to, so that we're not, you know, making decisions.
Do we ask the students for their opinion on the tobacco policy? I mean, come on. Like, what, 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 we're, we're going to have either Republican students, I'm just fast forwarding, or Democratic students voicing yes or no. And we're still, you know, this is one of these issues. I mean, I respect your opinion a hundred percent. I just don't believe student voices is even relevant. So this is.
Actually, if you, the, the, what is it called when the students have to do the the physical activity in gym class? The Presidential Fitness Award. That's signed by the president. I mean, if we're going to go down this path, it's really going to be a can of worms.
I think, all right, from this heart, okay, I'm just saying from this heart. Whether the Presidential Fitness Award is is political or not, what I'm saying is that having political activity around students and on the on our grounds is something that I think should be refrained from. And that's all, you know, so I certainly don't have an opinion one way, one way or the other about the Presidential Fitness Award.
And I think that's the question is, what is political activities of campaigning as what is, what is civics? And what is our our vision for our students as far as graduation and citizenship things too? So we can bring the discussion further.
Just briefly, I think that a student perspective could be valuable here. And as I was in this conversation, I kind of remembered that for our fifth and sixth grade honors presentations, if you receive any sort of honored certificate, it's signed by the president and the Secretary of Education. And like Ms. Turbin said, when I've received that and when the other students I was around received that, it didn't really cause a stir. And, you know, in my mind, whether you support an elected official or not, that's who it is. And that's who is governing the aspects that affect you in your life. And you should know who it is. And it's not something that I think really causes a disturbance in that kind of celebratory environment and something that I think that if we're raising civically engaged students should be recognized.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would also like to add, I have a similar viewpoint, like having the student perspective could be valuable. Like, I know high school administration has been arranging workshops for high school students to talk about like graduation apparel and things like that. And since this is something that concerns like what the students would be receiving upon their graduation, maybe just having like certain panels, just gauging what interest they have could give us like a head start or where we think we we might stand. And, but yeah, we can go from there and see based on where the interest lies.
Thank you for the. The suggestion.
Also have one thought that just came to me is the certificate that is included in with the diploma is from the office holder. Now, regardless of who the president is, you have an acknowledgement from the President of the United States. She just mentioned that. That or a senator or your state representative, regardless of who that person is, it's from the office holder acknowledging an accomplishment. I'm, I think politics is bad enough without putting this as a political issue.
Thank you. I guess one final thought I has, I guess we could do a survey. God knows we've learned how to do surveys in the past couple of years. So we could always do a survey or to gauge the students' interest or perhaps like Aditi mentioned. You know, there should be some discussion at the administrative level as there is about the the cap and gowns and around graduation. Mr. Rizzo, what do you think about that?
I think our high school staff has mechanisms in place to get feedback from students without doing a survey. I don't think that's necessary. If we want to go that direction and get feedback, we can. No, no, I'm not survey. I mean, you know, have them talk with the committees like they are with the graduation groups.
All right. So so the board is recommending that we, that Mr. Rizzo go ahead and find mechanism in which to have a voice from the students as on this, and we can bring that back to the board and but we are not recommending that a survey go out. Okay. All right. Good. Any other questions or comments before we move on to board comment? Any board comment?
Yeah, I just have something really quick here about, oh, okay. In addition to those financial interest forms that we have to fill out at this table, I know there was a comment and I briefly mentioned it to Karen, but Wendy too, there, there was a comment made at the last J O C meeting that we didn't need those there. In all of my time at J O C, we've had to submit that form over to their, to J O C as well to Western as well as to Springfield. So I think it would be in the best interest to do that. And I know that Mrs. Bickert has offered, when I handed my form here, that she's going to scan a copy over. Would you be able to scan and send those as well to the Western Center so that we can have them on record there? Thank you. Okay. And then just, I don't want to forget that we're going to switch property and finance, right? For the next, next time we meet.
Just a couple of things. I'm going to request from the administration that we try and keep the work sessions non non approval items as much as possible unless there, unless it's a time sensitive issue. We're starting to mix between the two meetings. And I hope the board members come with the same vigor to discuss finance the way we just discussed the political and the diploma. So, thank you. Let me just add on to that. So if we do find ourselves in a position where we do have to have an action item on a work session agenda, we'll provide a justification in a board memo.
Any other board comment?
I just wanted to thank the Islamic Society of Greater Valley Forge for inviting the school board tonight to an event called Sharing Ramadan. And this event was a chance for non Muslim friends, coworkers and community members to come to their mosque and see what Ramadan is about and break fast. So unfortunately, I did have to leave the event early to get here for our meeting. So I couldn't break the fast and eat the food, but it is in my car. Now that the sun has set, I cannot wait to eat it. But I just wanted to thank students, Sana, Amonala for inviting all of us. And it was a pleasure to represent all of you there tonight.
Thank you. Any other board comment? Okay, with that, then we move on to public to be heard. This does not have to be on agenda items. It could be on any item. And we will start with Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom public that would make a comment?
At this time, there is no one on Zoom with a comment.
Okay, looking to the, anyone in the community here in our room here who would like to make a public comment. Mia, go ahead and approach the podium and give your name and location. Do you reside?
Jordan Daxson from Collegeville. I'm a senior this year and we're doing graduation, obviously very excited. And I know for next year, the gowns have been changed to reflect Springfield's actual colors, blue and gold. But I was requesting that the board consider changing the graduation attire requirement for our graduation for 2022. The white gowns, which are mainly girls, are required to wear all white, white dresses and white shoes. And they also all have to be at mid calf. The mid calf and white combination is very, very creepy. We all know the connotations of white and for it to be on girls is not very nice. Also, Springfield is really big on individuality and putting us all in one big white mask doesn't really show that we're individuals. Additionally, white is not one of our colors, not even close. So that doesn't really make sense. Overall, people should just be allowed to be just comfy, whether they wanted to wear jeans, Converse, long dress, short dress. Because we just want to see what our senior group is. And it's obviously very eclectic, like I am. So I'm just considering if the board would offer feedback on that and we could change it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public to be heard?
I'm going to comment on that. I agree with her that the board should should look at it. In my 20 years of being in Springfield, I've always wondered why the colors were blue and gold. I've always wondered why the colors were blue and gold. But the girls always wore white and the focus of attire is always on the girls. They have to wear this. They have to wear that. Where the gentlemen are given more latitude. And I think it's something, you know, I think for her class is something that should be considered. You know, if nothing else, it should be considered. I know next year we're changing, we're changing to blue and gold. So I think the light went off from somebody's head that to me, this was somewhat me and the thought thinking to have them wear white. So that's my comment on that.
Why did we even have to have separate colors for males and females? I mean, to me, that's, that's the whole point. I don't think we can change colors. At this point, you probably already contracted for them. And I don't know, but I, I just think the whole idea of boys wear this color and girls wear that color is kind of archaic.
So I can't speak to, go ahead. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm not saying this directly to you to make any changes, but if we're going to have any general comments on this. You're all part of the same class. They're all part of the same school. So why are they wearing different colors? And there might be a good reason, but for the life of me, I can't think of it.
It's over the blue and gold. Why not just let every kid decide which color they want to wear?
So let me address a few things. One, I wasn't here whenever the decision was made for blue and white. I do know tradition has been in place for decades, maybe longer. I will say this, next year, Dr. Collier did do a lot of work to gain input from clubs, from students, faculty to make a change to a uniform, a uniform robe, one color robe, whatever that design is to be determined still, but it's not girls were one color, boys were another color. We're doing away, we're going away from that. And you're correct, white is not a Springfield color. It's an accent, but it's not a Springfield color. One of the reasons why students, girls are to wear white is because those robes are see through. And it helps continue with the the uniform look. Men are required to, gentlemen are required to wear light shirts, dark pants and a dark tie. And again, just something that has been in place traditionally. And I do know that Dr. Collier and his team are working to fix that for next year, but it does take a lot of time because seniors for 2023 are already starting planning for senior pictures now. And they do want to be wearing the robes. They're going to wear graduation for those pictures. So it's a, it's a much longer than just a few months process.
I just want to reiterate the fact that Dr. Collier did put on some workshop events in the beginning of the year where students from all walks of Springfield life came to share their opinions about this specifically. And I can say that I am in agreement with most of the things that I heard here. Besides the messaging, the white gown send, it's simply not practical to wear completely white clothing at graduation. But I do think that the main problem here and the the reason that it might be difficult to switch that for our classes because we have already taken those senior pictures in the white gowns and it would be inconsistent to wear something else at graduation. So I just wanted to put that out there.
I don't think, I don't think the request was to change the gowns. No.
Right. Yeah, it's not changing the gown, it's changing what students would be, girls would be required to wear underneath. And as a mother of two daughters that we hunted high and low for white dress, white shoes that we never wore again for graduation. I know that that can be a challenge more so for the for the girls than it is for the boys. I, I do love when we get the input put from the students and that to hear what Dr. Collier has done. And I appreciate that a student came tonight, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Jackson and spoke on this. I would love to see what input we could maybe get again from students and administration about what maybe would be less strict for what the the female students would be wearing under their white gowns, but then maybe could still be within the uniform. Some sort of uniformity. What would work? Would it be, you know, being able to wear white slacks? Make it make a big difference or being able to, I mean, just some some flexibility in that. Is that something we could do, Mr. Rizzo?
They already have, they already have the option to play to wear like Capri type pants. I think that is an option available to them. But again, I could have administration take a look at it. I recommend this graduating class, you wear what you want to wear. That's my position. You'll wear what you want to wear. And I don't think anything's going to happen to you. This is about, this is your day. It's not about this school board. It's not about the administration. These are the accomplishments that you you guys have achieved, not about us. So you're going to be on the field for hopefully we can get you out in two hours, standing on AstroTurf. You should be comfortable.
So let's maybe get some more input on that and make sure also that to see if there's any other additional like domino effect to this, like, you know, have that time to be able to reflect on what the impact change would do right now.
Just a quick clarifying comment from Mr. Jackson. The district spent a lot of good money. It's not AstroTurf. It's much better. So AstroTurf was an option, but it was terribly not good. It's dangerous, a lot of injuries. It's just, just clarifying.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Jackson and Ms. McVeigh for your input regarding this. And I, you know, it could be a common theme with me. It could be, you know, whatever. But I do think, again, it's important that this is the students' day and that we are inclusive of everyone and that they feel comfortable on their day, celebrating their accomplishments. It is parents' accomplishments as well too for getting there, but this is their day. So you have my support. And I, just, just for my own interest, I would like to be able to, if you could send me, Mr. Rizzo or Ms. Lee's wherever this policy or code lies of like traditionally where that came from. Or so I could read, like, I don't have a senior, so I don't know what this code is. And, you know, if we're discussing allowing flexibility this year, that that's included in whatever planning we're doing for the future. And that it's not just for the girls, that it's for the, not for the women, for the men as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the fact that next year we will be going to the same gown for all students too. Thank you.
I also wanted to add briefly, like. I um I also wanted to add briefly, like just as a student uh who is um like who has been constantly attending like the meetings that they have arranged for like the graduation apparel and since like the changes are being made for my class. Um I think another thought that uh the district administration had put like echoing some of the board member sentiments here, like the class uh divisions between like male and female, they wanted to like furthermore upheld the unity as a class that is graduating together over like those discrimination or like potential separation. So I think that was just another sentiment that they had behind um having a one color um and that to a color that represents what our Springfield colors are, so.
Thank you. All right, um public to be heard. This is Mac.
Um Mary Jo McNamara. Sorry. Um 187 or Limerick P I. Um so I would like to bring awareness to the board. One activity that occurred amongst our senior high school student population and their coach. I want to be really clear here. The intention of my message is to address the administration, not focus on the actions or the reactions of the students. On Saturday, April 2nd, a member of the track team used racially inappropriate language about another athlete through social media on their way home from a track meet. The information was brought to the coach's attention in writing on Tuesday, April 5th, and I believe verbally on Monday, April 4th. There were at least teacher awareness on Monday, April 4th. Most, if not all, student members of the team were aware by that time, and the wildfire spread among kids and students was kind of in full gear. On Wednesday, April 6th, my daughter arrived at the field to run in a meet, and with several other team members noticed with really big surprise that the athlete was still listed on the event roster to run. This is four days later. She approached the coach. She questioned why after the student pretty much admitted the wrong duty doing to other teammates, were they still scheduled to run? What was being done to address the incident and that she was extremely uncomfortable representing Springfield Track? If that's what it stood for. She asked to go home. The coach agreed, which only reinforced the feelings of being less important than the offending athlete that was still scheduled to run. Extremely upset, she called me and gave me the information. I immediately called the school. I think it was eight minutes after three on that Wednesday. I spoke to Mr. uh Mr. Regner. I made him aware. Several things happened after that. They're not critical to my goal here. They can't be said in under three minutes. Um there were a group of about seven other students just as upset as my daughter. I do want to say that Mr. Regner and A D McDaniel and Mr. Collier reacted immediately as soon as they were aware, and they are continuing to work to bring the thing to closure. My point here is why am I the parent bringing awareness to the administration? That coach knew about the incident for at least one full day, probably two full days, did nothing, notified no one, and scheduled the child to run in an event with an awareness that other students knew about this and were upset about it. Then she made it worse by the verbiage that she used when she confronted by my daughter, saying it's okay to go home. Teachers in the school were already aware. I'm appalled by the action of the coach. I blame our administration for not providing our teachers with the right tools to handle these situations. There's no excuse for the actions of that coach. My child is no longer on the track team. She has dreams of running track in college and has the ability to accomplish those dreams. What are we gonna do to fix this? People that say what the pro- what's the problem and where is the problem? Here's the problem. It exists. This isn't about kids calling names to other kids. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I want to hear this.
It's not about kids calling names to other kids. This is a problem. How are we going to fix it? How are we gonna make all the other athletes feel like they're being treated equally, that they're included? This is the second incident that I have been directly involved with in this school. This exists. So my unsolicited advice to the board again is to figure out the things that are important and make sure you're working on them.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other one in the in the audience here who would like to speak? So at at that, we are adjourned.
We're gonna just let her walk away. There's there's no comment on this. This is like the third time this has come up. I mean, there needs to be. It's gotta be a comment here. If not, I'll say something, but.
Well, any, you know, things that are are spoken at about at the podium are listened to by the board members and the administration.
Doesn't mean you don't comment on it. Doesn't mean you don't comment on it.
I think the discussion before has been about trying to avoid a back and forth question and answer session. But I I believe we spoke before about clarifying comments. I mean, we did just have a a clarifying session regarding graduation. Um I want to thank you, Ms. McNamara, for coming to us. Um and I want the community to know that that these situations are taken seriously by the board, and we need to know about them, and it's elevating. Again, I keep saying that's the voices of the people that are having the experience because I'm not, you know, my son, my oldest is eight. I'm not there experiencing this the way that the students are and the administration are and the teachers are. So maybe I I don't I don't know. I'm not on the E D I committee or nor do I believe that that is specifically the work for that committee, but there has to be a way for us to engage in how we're doing now. If I'm doing something wrong right now, I don't know, but I think, you know, that silence was deafening the last time we had a parent speak, and you know, we were all taken by surprise. I know nothing about this situation. I've heard rumors about an incident at track, but I've never been given, and nor do I think that it's our job to micromanage discipline. You know, our job is to ensure that we have the right people in the right places, making the right decisions for the district. But there does need to be some sort of avenue for a response to to how this has been handled um and what what is happening going forward. So I would like to allow Mr. Rizzo the opportunity to do so if he if he is able to.
And I agree because I'm aware of this and have been, and I know some track team members that no longer want to be on the track team.
Well, let me say this. There is no structure that a board member can't speak. I've said this before, every board member has the same power, for lack of a better word. No one can tell another board member not to speak. What we did, what we did during COVID, because the meetings were running three hours, four hours, there was there was minimal um responses to parents. But if a board member wants to say something with a parent up there or a kid up there, you have that right to say something. You don't need approval from anyone.
I think it is, you you know, important to have, again, kind of going back to the policy about meetings, is that consistency? Because as a parent and 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 maybe moving away from COVID, things will be different, but as a parent on the other side of that screen, when some people will get a response and some wouldn't, and you know, not feeling like everybody had those equal opportunities to be heard, and obviously, we would, we probably, I wouldn't be sitting here. You guys would all still be sitting here probably if if we had allowed that, but um so I I I think it's important, yes, to acknowledge that, but then to acknowledge that the community also may not feel the same way if I respond and, you know, you know what I'm saying.
Well, one of the things is if you're and 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 defensive of the board being silent at times is because we're caught flat footed. We don't have any background information on what that community member is talking about. So how why would you comment? You'd just say something, make yourself look stupid. So um if we don't have the background information, then it I I would say zip it, you know, until we had more information to comment on.
And I would like to say that procedurally, the format for this type of meeting is that when public is to be heard, it is not a question and answer back and forth. That procedurally, it is meant as a comment, but I would like to be very clear about this, that no board member has been told at any time that they may not speak.
I agree with that, Dr. Wright. I don't I don't disagree with that.
But you said that.
No, I wanted I wanted to provide clarity that if a board member wants to speak on any item that's discussed in any meeting, they have the right to do that.
That is correct. Has been, always has been.
But I just want to clarify too, because um I think Abby brought up a good point. There were there were so many comments, and and Mr. Jackson, you brought this up. There were so many comments during COVID, and and a lot of us here remember all that, and you remember all of that being that there were so many that if there was something that was totally cut and tried, that we could just answer and 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 get it off the table, then any one of us was able to do that and and did that at times. It's not that silence and some of those comments was what we wanted, but a lot of times, and and I'm sure everybody here knows this or or has felt this way, you're reflecting and you're thinking about what is being said, right? And sometimes it takes a little bit longer. Do I think that there still needs to be acknowledgement, especially to Mrs. McNamara tonight and and to the the things before? Absolutely. Do we have all the solutions or the answers tonight? Absolutely not, right? And and I'm sure Mr. Rizzo has his his hand on the buzzer, that he is going to comment and say, you know, that it's that it's being addressed, it's thoroughly being looked in, looked, looked into, and you know, I appreciate that. And I think Mr. Rizzo does a great job at that. So I I have confidence in him that we're gonna move towards resolution. Can we control what what kids do all the time? No, I think we know that as parents, right? But we can try to set a good example and try to lead them in a better direction. So I hope that that's what we're gonna hear from Mr. Rizzo, but in no way, all that time during COVID, did we not want to answer questions? We just couldn't, couldn't.
What's what's being missed here? The bigger picture is this. And Dr. Wright, I meant no disrespect to my position. We have board mem- we have board meetings that people normally just don't attend. Other than Mr. Cromley, you know, he's a consistent here. So to me, when I when a parent takes time out of their schedule to come and sit through a board meeting, I read that as they have concerns that haven't been addressed in their mind. Not to say that it hasn't been addressed by the administration, but in their minds, in in my definition, the way I read it, if they come here and sit for three hours, there's something bugging them about that issue. And my only concern is, I would like for us to at least acknowledge that we will speak with you, find out what your concern is that brought you to a board meeting for three hours. You know, what's what's there that we haven't been addressed to your liking? That's all.
My turn, okay. Um first, I am aware, um Ms. McNamara and I did have a conversation. I have been updated what's going on. I we all know, right? I cannot speak to personnel or student issues here in this forum. But we we know that. I do acknowledge that she's spoken, and what I got from her is what I think are, you know, what Miss Lee's and some of our E D I committee members have been saying, that is one of the one of our goals is to increase our training and professional development in this area so we can support our staff i- in in all areas having to do with with these types of issues, and that's what we're working towards. So um so no, I I appreciate it. We are on it. We are dealing with it. Uh I can't say much more than that, but I can say that um her words um definitely uh meant something to me and and certainly to our to our team that is working towards um providing training to our staff. Thank you.
Uh Dr. Mr. Rizzo, I guess I I don't think this has anything to do with the E D I. I don't think the E D I is, you know, this magic tool that we're gonna sprinkle pixie dust and it's gonna correct the ills of of the world.
No, Mr. Jackson, I think you misunderstood what I'm saying. What I'm saying is one of the goals that was identified through the E D I committee was to be working on this professional development and equipping our staff. I'm just saying that that's one of the reasons why, that's all.
Staff to include, perhaps potentially coaching staff also, maybe.
I'll let it go. Okay.
All right, any other comments regarding that? So um do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, meeting adjourned.